All right, good evening. We'll call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Oh, man. Man, that hurts.
And roll call?
Commissioner Mark Mazzoni?
Here.
Commissioner Brian Palmer?
Here.
Commissioner Daryl Parham?
Present.
Chair Monica Zinda?
Here. Um, since we don't have any public, I'm assuming we don't have any non-agenda public comment.
I'll make one. What do you want?
Do we have any conflicts of interest amongst us for the items up tonight?
Not tonight.
No? I, uh, I guess it's time for that oh-so-exciting PowerPoint that I'm looking forward to. Am I correct?
You are correct.
We're postponing the staff until, and getting the PowerPoint first.
So Keith's not gonna talk then?
He will later. He's delayed. Ooh.
They look kinda alike. So they kinda look alike. Yep, yep, I know.
Good evening, whoever you are.
Good evening. This is Adam Nelson with ProEquity. How is everyone doing tonight?
Good.
Can you turn your volume up a little bit?
Uh, I've got it up.
That's awesome.
Is that?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes. I can hear every word now.
All right. Well, I don't know if you guys had any specific questions, if you wanted me to kinda walk through the slides we'd put together. I'm flexible.
Um, why don't we hear what you've got to, see what you've got to show us, and then if we have questions afterwards, we'll have at it.
Yeah, all right. Well, um, first off, we are, we've been having a ver- a lot of fun working with the city and all the people at the staff level on this project. We're very excited to be here.
Excuse me? Could you introduce-
Be talking about design view.
Excuse me?
The project is, yes.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, sure. I thought I'd done that. My name's Adam Nelson. I'm with ProEquity Asset Management. We are the development entity that is building the Dollar Tree building.
Thank you.
Sure. So the, um, the, the project is pretty straightforward. It's a build-to-suit for Dollar Tree. It's an approximate 10,000 square foot freestanding building. That's gonna be secured by a 10-year corporate lease with Dollar Tree. Uh, the design elements we used, we tried to be consistent with the newer retail developments, specifically the Starbucks and the grocery outlet. Uh, you know, Dollar Tree is a Fortune 200 company. They've got about 15,000 stores nationwide in 48 different states. And, um, they're really excited to be, uh, in the city of weed. We've had our lease signed for a while now. Um, this is the next big step for us, is just getting this designer view meeting. And, you know, we hope to have this project up and open in, uh, in the summertime, barring weather and anything else that may, uh, slows down. Um, if you wouldn't mind popping to the second slide for me. All right, so the site is a little bit bigger than an acre. Uh, 45,000 square feet. It is located to the east and adjacent to the grocery outlet, just south of Vista Drive. So you'll see it's a more or less a rectangular-shaped building. We've got, uh, parking on the west, north, and east side. And you'll see the, uh, the entrance to the west will be the inbound entrance from traffic, and we've got circulation for delivery for the truck all the way around the south of the building, coming back out to the north, uh, to Vista Drive to head back to the freeway. Um, this, this building's a, you're gonna hear me say "prototypical" a couple times. This is a prototypical design building for, um, Dollar Tree. And if you wouldn't mind popping to the next slide for me. This just shows you a general interior design of the building. So you've got about 7,500 square feet of actual retail store sales space to the north of the project, and then you've got about 2,400 square feet to the south of the project, which is their storage facility. And the loading area is located on the east side in that southeast corner. And if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So these are the elevations of the building. Uh, we are using a prefabricated, um, steel-designed building with, uh, EPIS attachments on the front of the building, the north side of the building, blast front. And the EPIS extends slightly on the west and east sides of the building. And again, this is, this is sort of a prototype that Dollar Tree likes to use in markets of this size. We think it's a really lean-looking building. We think it'll tie in nicely with grocery outlet. And, um, if you wanna flip to the very last slide, this is probably more information than you guys need at this juncture, but this just gives a breakdown of some paint color, some of the material finishes, you know, using LED lighting throughout the exterior of the building. Uh, we're using aluminum storefront window systems. Um, it's a, you know, uh, steel, like, again, steel-fabricated, uh, sides and EPIS architectural attachments on the front of the building. So I feel like I've spoken too much. That's, that's what I was prepared with, and now I'm happy to take any questions you guys have.
When, uh, when are you going to start building?
Well, we hope to start building soon. Um, we've gotta get through, you know, obviously, get escrow closed, and barring weather, hopefully be under construction, um, you know, first quarter. Um, the building will, will, they'll start to design the building relatively soon. Again, it'll, it's, it's prefabricated. It'll show up, um, on a truck, and it can be assembled once the concrete foundation is poured. Uh, it can be assembled pretty quickly, and we're shooting for a, you know, Q2 opening.
2002 or '22? 22?
No, it's-
Okay, okay.
Yeah, quarter two, yeah. 21.
And you're, the builders, are they local, or are they someone that the, the Dollar Tree employs? I mean, how does that work? Will that help out any jobs for locals? As far as the building goes, construction?
As far as the building, the actual assembly of the building goes, there are a couple different, um, steel-building assembling firms that Dollar Tree likes. We are talking with a total of three of them right now. And, you know, based on overall costs where they come in, we'll pick one of the three. Um, you know, we've been using a lot of, uh, as many local people as we can on the project. Uh, Robert Martin, who's been fantastic. Um, you know, our architect and engineer are based down here. They're groups we've used before in the past. Um, and, you know, with regards to, uh, general, general contractor, if we use a general contractor, we, we just kinda need to get it through this designer view phase, make sure everything's approved from your end, so we can get, uh, construction documents prepared by our architect, and then we can get those out and to be reviewed by potential general contractors.
Thank you.
And we have some very excellent general contractors in our area. It would be much appreciated if you could use someone local, if you have the opportunity.
Yeah. We'll, we'll explore the option.
These designs that you have, though, this is norm for, for this company, right? The Dollar Tree, the same coloring and, uh, the make? I mean, it's kind of a already put together. Is that correct?
Correct. They, you know, like most retailers, whether it's a Starbucks or a grocery outlet, they have a corporate standard for the way the building looks from the exterior. And, um, we're trying to do the best we can, you know. They have, they have a, they want it to look a certain way. You guys have your guidelines, and so we're trying to do the best we can in the middle to keep everybody, uh, happy. But we like the way the building looked. Um, they've, they've approved. They like the way the building looks. Um, and it, it, it matches their, sort of their national, um, corporate standards.
Yeah, no, it looks good. I like it.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
How many people are gonna get employed?
You know, I, I have not had that conversation with, uh, Dollar Tree. I can, I can find out. I'm happy to reach out to them and find out, um, you know, what they're thinking from a staffing standpoint. Um, so I'm happy to, I'm happy to reach out to them, get that information, and I can get it back to CM if that's okay.
Just for curiosity. I like it.
Yeah.
No, the building looks fine. It was built before in another place. And where's our staffer? Where's our guy?
Okay. Does any, do any of the other commissioners have questions at this point?
No, I have, what I thought. Yeah. Are you?
Thank you.
Yeah, like- Where is he at? He's at home.
Hello?
It's Cam. Here we-
We don't have to see you. We just have to hear you.
Yeah, we don't have to.
We're just back to normal, Keith. Audio technology.
Uh, this is bullshit. All right, I give it up. I give it up.
Hey, Keith, we have, Keith, we have audio.
Oh, Keith. Don't give up, Keith.
Uh-
You wanna, you wanna just discuss the-
I can't tell if I'm on or not, so-
Yeah, you are.
I don't know. What, where are we?
If you wanted to-
Where were we, and why were we talking about contractors and stuff?
Adam, um, Adam, Adam went through his PowerPoint, and, um, commissioners-
Okay.
-asked their questions, and they're just wondering, um, they wanna find out about your findings and conditions of approval.
Well, I, I assume that they've, uh, read the staff report. Uh, basically, um, let me think where I am. Do we know anything about, like, okay, oh, geez. The proposed, uh, design is about 10,000 square feet. You probably went through that. The parking and all that, uh, the retail space is about 700, 7,555 square feet. Um, the site is 46,480, kind of like above an acre. So, in its own CM and the municipal code, has a general plan designation of commercial center. The construction would result in approximately 22% of the lot being covered. Of course, it's surrounded, uh, by the same type of, um, development. We have, uh, as a matter of fact, we have the grocery outlet right next door, and I think the last time we looked at this whole property as a whole, we did some, um, we did some sort of, uh, uh, tentative map. That was it. It's a small tentative map. We created a couple more lots from the original subdivision that was done when the pilot station was proposed. So we had, in those days, we had a, it was a mitigated negative declaration for the prob- property. And since then, we have, you know, been doing some development. So I just wanna kinda go through what the application has and what it needs. First of all, it doesn't need anything. We've, uh, we've revert, reviewed this application, and the design has the, um, design review application has a clear outline of what we need to look at this project to make sure that it's up to our standards. And then we have to make some findings about compatibility. And that's really all it really is in a design review. Um, all the time, as you know, design reviews are subject to CEQA. This one, like I was just trying to say, was first, um, analyzed in, when the pilot station came in. I believe that was 2006, maybe? Um, I forgot, but, so they passed a negative declaration then. Since then, it's been addendums, because the mitigation for that has been just basically to submit, uh, traffic mitigation fees and so forth. And we already have a drainage system there in that area. It was made as a part of that, um, subdivision. So therefore, any, any applications lately have been infill development. When we did the, um, grocery outlet, uh, it was passed, and it, and an infill exemption was, um, adopted. I'll get into CEQA in a minute. I just wanna get into this here. We have, um, we do, on the site plan, we have all of the requirements outlined of the dimensions of the property. It does show that. Uh, unfortunately, you can't really see it on the smaller versions, but the big, the big stuff has it, is pretty well. So, uh, dimensions and location of all the existing buildings, and including distances between, we have the setbacks are shown. Uh, approximate location of new water and sewer lines, uh, to service the area are there. Um, location and width of any roads fronting on or providing access to the property. This property has, um, better access, I think, than the grocery outlet. If I remember right, we did a design review where Mark brought up this, the width of driveways for, for, I think it was for the, um, Klich Chang project. And, you know, I kinda started thinking about that, and sometimes a 30-foot driveway, which is what we say is our maximum width, isn't enough to get, um, trucks off of, in and out necessarily as safe, especially when it's kind of at an angle, like, let's say, grocery outlet was. But anyway, so this time I looked at, um, we compared the, the Redding Construction Standards, which we also adopt, and that's more of the contemporary way to do it. So we have, um, one driveway that's over 30 feet and another one that's not. But basically, as you could see in that, that, um, site plan, with the one that shows the, the circulation for the trucks, that's kinda how that's designed. So that's a really good access design, if you ask me. Also, location of any recorded easements. Well, we have, we did have some of those on that site, on the, on the, uh, they were identified when we did that subdivision. Again, I think when I look back at our subdivision ordinance, um, it asked for a little too much. And so we had to do a lot line adjustment and, and move some of the easements that are there, but basically, they're, they're shown. So that's all that counts. Now, let's get into CEQA. Just, uh, what, a Class 32 exemption, which is infill, is really meant for areas that are substantially already developed and that have, um, all of the sewer and the, you know, the wastewater and the water available on site. You know, basically, it's kinda like something that logically goes there, and it doesn't have to have, uh, any more development of facilities. And they're supposed to be less than five acres. And there, there's a few findings that we can make easily on this. The project is consistent with the applicable general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies, as well as zoning designation and regulations. Of course, it is. We have a C, CM. Anything from CM to C1 is, is along those two roads. And if it is C, CM, CM allows C2 and C1. So we're good there. The proposed development occurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres, substantially surrounded by similar urban-style uses. We know that one is to be true. We, we've pretty much de- decided on proper, property, you know, sites for building already, and have been either developing them or marketing them, and also collecting traffic impact fees. So, um, the project has, um, no value as habitat or endangered rare or threatened species. Now, this one, you, you, I had to, um, look at the, the way we, when we did grocery outlet. It was about, it was the same, um, exemption. So we, I pretty much looked at the data from that one, and there was, uh, no, they do a, a survey of the, of a site plus a large area around the site. Just a computer survey, like a database survey. And they don't find any, uh, threatened, uh, or habitat endangered or rare species or their habitat, um, on that site. Or anywhere near that site, basically. It also, approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic noise, air quality, and water quality. The applicant submitted a traffic impact study from KD Anderson that, um, focused on that, that data. It didn't, it, it pretty much, what, what we have to do here is pretty much get a number so we can figure out what the mitigation would be for this. And we already have a mitigation plan together for traffic impacts. And according to that study, the basic trips would be about 420. Now, I have to get that, before the building permit, we have to get that confirmed, and that's all it is. Now, we have to do like a, a condition of approval to, before the building permit, do this, that, and the other thing, and I believe that's on there. So, I, I believe we can make the CEQA findings of exemption for a Class 32. It is south weed. Uh, there's a lot of activity there. There's been a lot of activity, and all the sites are pretty much disturbed. And there's nothing else that we have to actually build to put something there. So, that's, uh, that's my take on CEQA. Now, technically, I don't know, I hope this, if you, if you guys remember that, there's a site, there's a table in there, if you know, have you recognized? Have you seen the table in the staff report? Parking in-site designed. This is what they're supposed to be clearly marked. Um, yes, we're gonna have clearly marked spaces, and it's compliant with that. Uh, stall size, uh, typical commercial in our city is 19 by 20. They have that indicated on their site plan. The number of spaces. Now, this is based on the storage, no, the usable space, not the gross floor area, thankfully. A lot of cities go for the gross floor area, and we, what we end up with is a large parking lot with empty spaces. So, what they need for this site is 38 spaces plus two ADA spaces. Uh, and they're compliant, because they do show 41 plus two ADA. Uh, snow storage must be shown. There is no storage in a rear corner toward, in the back, and it's a rather larger area. It's not necessarily a, a parking space, which is about the minimum. So it's, it's, it meets the minimum. Lighting. Uh, basically, we wanna have no glare onto neighboring property. I was challenged to find that actually in the code, um, because, you know, when you wanna, when you're trying to tell someone to, to provide something, you have to kinda show that you really need it. And I really couldn't, except for some vague, uh, references in the, in the application materials themselves and a parking lot rule about lighting a parking lot with at least a certain candle light, uh, candle brightness. But what we've been doing, and I think is what's totally reasonable, and I think the applicants believe so too, is that we just wanna have downward-facing fixtures with hooded, like, around them so the, so the glare doesn't, doesn't bleed off the property. It's kind of a standard thing, you know? We just don't wanna have wall packs, um, you know, that broadcast lights straight out, like, let's say, what you get in an industrial site. Cause the one thing is, we got cars in the area, and sometimes you're coming up on a, a site, like, when you're coming up in the middle of the night, or in the dark, to pilot, and all their lights are showing, you know, from their canopy? Well, sometimes you can't even see where the driveway is. At least that has been my experience. So, we have a sample of the lighting, uh, provided, and it does show that they're wall-packed types, but there's, they're hooded. So there's not gonna be any, you know, glare coming off of those things. So next is the, really the big thing. Uh, we have a lot of technical issues that they met clearly and articulated it clearly in their elevations and site plan. Uh, but now we have to talk about, um, the main thing, which is, is it compatible with the surroundings? And, yes, it is. Uh, the design is as shown in the renderings and elevation, the lighting design, the landscaping. And signage is set in a portion of the city where this service-oriented development is dominant. The addition of the Dollar Tree is shown in the project materials is similar and compatible with the trends of development in Key Growth Area 6. Um, I've been around here for, uh, three or four of these Starbucks grocery outlet and, uh, loves. And we're, we're getting a trend of like that, um, you know, stucco kinda plastered, split-face rock, or maybe just painted block face. But subdued colors kinda fitting in with the naturalness of it. Not necessarily a requirement, but we have to just make a judgment on whether it stands out or if it, if it interferes with other people's, other owners' investments, or just basically does not fit in. The colors are subdued, similar to the immediate vicinity and recent trends. The project is shown as entirely compatible with the sound surroundings, in staff's opinion. So that, the actual municipal code says, are the architectural, this is what the question you, we gotta ultimately answer. Are the architectural and general appearance of such buildings or, and grounds in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and such as not to be detrimental to the orderly and harmonious development of the city? And secondly, will the project will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood? Now, we all know that when you, when you develop things such as this, it actually increases the desirability for other investments. And so, uh, that finding can be made. And it's, is it keeping within the character of the neighborhood? We have grocery outlet right next door. We got the pilot across the street. We got various hotels. Uh, we got a Starbucks, McDonald's, you know? I mean, we have a lot of varied designs that are sort of similar, but all sort of corporate-themed. So I would say you can make that finding as well. The sign. Um, this, this, this also includes a sign permit. The applicant's merely, um, as far as a freestanding sign goes, which is why we have to talk to you guys about it, is they just wanna have, and it's shown on the site, the site plan, they wanna have a, they're proposing a freestanding sign, which is a monument sign. It's gonna be a total height of the structure about eight feet. Um, the width of this structure is gonna be nine feet. The total area is 59.5 square feet. So, that is well within our, our allowed signage for a freestanding sign. We, um, we allow, uh, one foot per street front, one foot of sign area per one foot of street frontage. So we're looking at 100 and something square, uh, square foot allowance. And then we also say for each additional 2,000 square feet of parking area, the freestanding sign can have an additional 20 feet of sign area. So essentially, there's, the sky is the limit on the, on the amount of signs you want, I guess. If, unless it's a huge, you know, whatever. So, so we have 189 feet of street frontage. Basically, we're, we're compliant on that sign. And, and I think that staff was expecting, like most applicants, wanting to have a large sign. Uh, you know, a, a, a lollipop sign is what we call them. And to our pleasant surprise, the applicant is seeking only the flush-mounted signage on their building, which is kind of a sign in itself, a buil- a building like this, and this small monument sign. They don't desire to, uh, pollute the sky or the, the, whatever that is, the skyscraper, uh, this profile with, with more tall signs. So that's a plus in my book. So I think that that sign is easily approved- So, I think that that sign is easily approvable. So, the project is consistent with the Weed Municipal Code, the general plan and design guidelines. The configuration of all structures are visually harmonious with the site and surrounding sites. The architectural design of structures, their materials are visually harmonious with the other development in the area. The plan for landscaping, I know that we don't really have much to say about our requirements, except for we want areas that aren't in parking lot to be landscaped. So, they've done, they've done that. If you want more landscaping, I guess you could tell them to take away some parking, but I don't think that would be something that we're interested in. And there's not going to be any indiscriminate clearing of property, destruction of trees or natural vegetation, or grading. This area's been fully kind of prepared and ready to go. It's really about shovel-ready. So, that's my staff report. The conditions of approval, the project should be substantially built as approved or as modified by you guys tonight. So, I say substantially built, because there's always something that comes up. And sometimes, it's easier just to let it go than to have to come back. And then, prior to building permit, traffic impact fee due based on the report is due. So, my recommendation is to just adopt the exemption and approve the project as submitted. That's it.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have any other information coming in at this point?
You guys asked.
Keith, my, I have, I have a question regarding the traffic on Vista in front of this proposed Dollar Tree. It looks, from the maps, it looks like that Vista Drive is a through drive. And it's not. It's a cul-de-sac, because there are all these huge traffic barriers set up, not far from the entrance and exit to the Dollar Tree. Is there any plans to either move those traffic barriers back? Or, it's, it's crazy there sometimes. And it's hard to get out of the driveway for the grocery outlet, because of the semis jockeying around in front of those traffic barriers. So, I'm wondering if the city has any plans for, ish, for ameliorating these conditions right in front?
No, the city actually has a, a traffic mitigation study that was done for the whole south weed. And they're following that. I don't have any information like that.
I saw no mention of the fact that that's a cul-de-sac and not a through fair. There was talk about a stoplight on the corner.
What difference does it make at this point, when we have a partially developed subdivision with two or three more lots down, down the street? We have a RV park that's been permitted that's way back there. You know, well, that's why the road is stubbed out. It's not a cul-de-sac. If you look, it's stubbed out. There's like a fence barrier there.
Well, I know. It's, it's a temporary barricade that's been set up until hopefully, development moves on through. But I'm just curious if there was any talk of, of trying to ease some of the traffic situations there.
This is, here's, here's the scoop. As a traffic mitigation study, as it develops, the mitigation changes. Right now, we're just collecting fees. As soon as it's warranted to even put in a light, we put in a light. I guess we should probably go over that mitigation study again someday. I know I probably could use looking at it, but yeah, that, that is a stubout road, and it's definitely, that's how they deal with roads that are to be continued.
Right. I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking-
If there was an impact on this project that warranted putting in a light, or developing any more lanes, or doing something, it would have been a mitigation measure.
Okay. I was just curious if, if it had been talked about, because it's pretty busy right there. And with 420 cars going in and out of the parking lot, it's only going to get even busier. And I think we need to be forewarned that I see issues.
If you look, if you look at that traffic study, the actual percentage of the, of the draw to this project is very small, is compared to how many, how many trips there actually are on that road. So, it's not like this, this is going to be some straw that breaks the camel's back. It's, it's like very small. I'd say, gosh, the percent, if you look in there, I have, I don't have it open right now, but there's a lot of cars already on the road. And the extra margin here that, that we're worried about, isn't, they said less than significant.
Okay.
Based on all the standards that they know about, from Caltrans on down to legislation.
I did read the traffic report, because I was interested, and, and it just, it didn't really address-
It's kind of hard.
The amount of traffic that there, that's already there. But, okay, thank you.
I have one question. Just on back on the SEQA. We're going to probably say this is okay, doesn't have to have the businesses exempt from the SEQA. Does that affect anyone else going to build back in that area? Are they going to have to go through a SEQA, or does it just depend on which business it is?
It's really, that's a good question, Mark. It's kind of site-specific. In, in this case, we're using an infill project. So, if the next-door neighbor is under the same thing, it's still infill. So, as soon as you get to where there's no more facilities, like, let's say sewer pipes, and you've got to extend them out-
Right.
Or extend the road, then all of a sudden, it's not necessarily an infill project anymore. And so, then, we have to come up with something, and it might be a negative declaration. I mean, look at, look at Loves. It's in the same general area, but, you know, that didn't qualify, and they did a, a major DIR with, actually with a lot of data that we could use in the future as well.
Right. I just wondered, kind of grandfathered anything else-
There is this thing as cumulative, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you answered it, though. I just, to make sure-
No, I think that what you're talking about is cumulative impacts. Well, we do have to do that, you know, consider cumulative impacts, but, gosh, we thought of them in Loves, we thought of them probably when we did the, the traffic impact mitigation fee study. So, and our general plan, as a matter of fact. So, this kind of exemption is pretty site-specific. And it matters on how big the property is, and how well it's served, and how many, like, say, you know, endangered species are present. And that's why we had them do the traffic study, because to figure out what the mitigation would be. And that's why I, I looked at the, all the SEQA that's had been done up to now. And all that, all those findings still apply to this infill project.
I guess I'm just saying, is, I didn't want to make sure that, so I understand, this isn't like grandfathered in for anyone else decides to build out in that area? If it has to go through SEQA?
No, everything's considered on a case-by-case basis.
That's all I need to know. I'm good.
Yeah. Yeah. But that, that's, that's, that's a good question.
Do we have any more questions?
Are you okay?
I'm good. Thank you, Keith.
Okay, sure, Mark.
Do we have any more questions?
No, I'm excited for this project.
Does anybody want to make a motion, or you want me to do it? I can do it. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the notice of exemption for SEQA and approve the design review and sign permit for the Dollar Tree retail store on Vista Drive.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. We have, we have approval.
Cool. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Adam. You guys did a great job on your application.
We really appreciate the guidance, and we've enjoyed working with you guys, and we're really excited to see this through and get it done, and hopefully do another, another development deal down the road. It's been great. We really appreciate everything, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to having a real dollar store. Woo-hoo!
It'll be great. It'll be good for the city.
Okay. I'm assuming there's no public hearing, because we have no public. So, we go on to item A, the conditional use permit for the storage container.
Yeah. I'll, I'll go ahead with the staff report, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Go for it.
Hello? Okay. This one was a little, a little bit different for me. It's basically a simple project, as we know. Getting a use permit for installing a prefabricated storage container at 170 Bolle Street. The site plan was included, A site plan was included in the application. It wasn't really clear to me where these were going, because it's kind of an issue with, with aesthetics, but I think I've worked this out. Basically, we want a use permit, is, I bet it's in reaction to people putting them on, you know, any old place, and the aesthetics and all that. And I think like, you know, placing them in front of your driveway, and I think it would be more of a temporary thing. But, so we have this. I had a lot of problems trying to figure out where this was actually going to go on, because the site, I didn't even really know that the, that, that, the business was set back from the road. If you look at the site plan, it's a little confusing. So, I hopped on my mapping software, and I looked at the air photos from the City of Weed, and I was very pleasantly surprised to see that this site is set back from the street. Because here's why. We have a law that is kind of, kind of specific, and it's very criteria-based. And usually, criteria-based laws are administrative. You know, like, if you can check off all the boxes, you know, you just tell, you know, they go ahead and do it, like a building permit. And then, if there's something that's different, kind of like we do with our fences, then the person comes with a use permit. But no, we have this whole thing. So, there's a lot of, there's a couple things here that I think that if, and then, okay, to make matters worse, when I, when I identified the spot on the air photo, I was wrong. So, my assessment is kind of based on everything that, that's misinformation that I have. So, the only thing I'm worried about is we have this Section D in there that says, "Storage containers shall be entirely screened by a solid wall or fence as approved in the use permit, with a minimum height equivalent to the height of the container." There is an alternative, in lieu of such a wall, the, or fence, painted the color of the primary structure as conditioned by the use permit. I think that's what we have here. I know that this thing is off the street. So, essentially, I think it's probably the best is to have the applicant fill in the blanks when we're done here. And I, and it's also exempt from SEQA, because it's replacement or reconstruction of a small So, there's two alternatives that I gave. And it's, it basically, if the planning commission feels this project is reasonably consistent with the intent of the municipal code related to the commercial office site design, and then approve this request as presented. If the planning commission has concerns that the project is not within the intent of the regulation, then discuss the project in terms of modifications to bring it more into what the planning commission can approve. The only thing I really, really think is, is an issue here is the site of it, like, he's going, they're going to paint it, that's going to be a good, good thing. But this Section D with the wall around it, I mean, I, I don't, I don't have the authority to, like, if this was an administrative permit, I wouldn't have the authority to check that box, because there isn't one. But I think you guys can actually do something here. So, that's my, my recommendation is to adopt the notice of exemption, and, well, do one of those two alternatives. I, I think that the intent of the whole project is clear. It's needed. It isn't necessarily in the front driveway or anything like that. So, that's my staff report. It's, it's probably approvable, but I, I just don't have a, a clear path to that. That's it.
I am a little confused about the exact placement of this container, because in some of the material, it said it was on one side of the parking lot, but then other material said it was in front of the fence next to the residential area. And the drawing says it's in front of the fence next to the, to the block wall. Is that exactly where it will be? It's not on the other side of the parking lot, like the photograph?
Yeah, the photograph is my error.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
I assume that, because that's the only place I could see it being approvable.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have questions?
Yeah, I think Mike needs to help out now, because-
Yes.
I, I just want you guys to be reasonable, you know, when we make this decision.
Thanks, Keith.
You know, I'm familiar with, you know, with Mike, because I, when I worked for the city, I had to go back there a few times. So, it's, it's way in the back. I know what building he's talking about, the ones that are, the sheds that are, I think they would be what on the-
It's going to be opposite.
Right. Yeah, right across, like where the-
Across, where those ever two are.
Yeah, exactly. So, I understand where that's at. I don't have a problem with where they're going. Right. You can't, it's really, see it behind that admin building. So, I'm familiar with-
It's not going to be completely invisible, but it will be an improvement.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Mick.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Where it is, right next to block wall that separates our property and the apartments. And currently, there are two sheds there, and our, the parking lot is, covers up those sheds completely when our staff is parked in there. And at one point, until a few years ago, when we switched from a dumpster to just a garbage can, because it just didn't make sense to have a dumpster, we used to have a dumpster right there in the same place. So, it would be, and John Pimberton has already told me that we would need to paint it the same color as our building, which is absolutely no problem at all. Putting a fence around the outside would be probably an expense as a nonprofit that would be very difficult for us to afford. But we plan on making it, we're going to remove three old wooden buildings that, you know, we have six total, and we will only have three of those portable buildings. All three of them are metal, and none of them are painted, of those six, none of them are painted to match our existing color scheme. The three that are wooden are in, in really bad shape, and we store a lot of confidential records out there. And we need something, because we have a lot of confidential information, and this, this storage unit does everything we need it to do, and is very secure. We're assured by the company we're working with, if you approve our, our request, that it'll be watertight and windtight. And, you know, it, it'll be just a great thing for us as a nonprofit. We're very limited in what we can afford, and this is something that would fall right into where we could, you know, get it done. And we could get it done in a very timely fashion.
So, the, the container in question that you're looking at, is this going to be a modified, like a shipping container? Like a 40-foot?
It is. We were, we're hoping, we may modify it by having the company that we're working with put a door, a side door, because currently, it only has double doors on one end, and those doors would be facing the back of our property, where nobody would see them, not toward the street.
Yeah, I, the company I work for, we have the same thing, several of those in our facilities. And I've seen a lot of those done, that when they're painted, and they've got the side doors, I mean, they're, they're really good for what you're looking for. And it looks like it's a definite improvement, both for you and for your neighbors on what you currently have. So, I think that, that sounds like a very good plan.
Keith, did that answer your questions, or help you out, as far as having a fence or anything?
Oh, he's gone.
I'm sorry, Mark, is that for me?
Was for Keith, but that's all right. So, it's already- So it's already down, it's already back there by that fence, right, the wall?
Well, they've got a back fence, but it says it needs a fence all the way around it, and it's up to us whether we want to require that or not.
Well, and I think that the original intent of having the fence around the enclosures, as it was written, was for the aesthetics, and like we've all discussed earlier, this is an improvement, both for the aesthetics and the functionality. So I don't really see where there's any negative here with this proposal.
Plus being expensive.
Yeah, I agree.
Which you don't, you don't need to have that expense.
Well, Keith said that, the question he asked was, that was his issue. So, yeah, I'm good with it. I don't think we need, he doesn't need the fence. I think the building itself, the container itself is, like Commissioner Parham said, it's a huge improvement, and once he fixes it up, paints it, I'm good with it, myself. I have no question.
Well, you know, I'm sorry, I might have had my microphone off, but I just wanted to reiterate that, yeah, it is really about aesthetics, this law intent, and I think it was made in a reaction to some really poor judgment that was made by some people.
Right.
It kind of seems like that's the history. So, here we have a law, but this project, sort it, does take into account the aesthetics because of the site. I don't think the aesthetic problems will be realized, and like I said in the staff report, and surely to be a great improvement. And the applicants seem to realize the importance, and, you know, indicated they are going to paint the container to match the color scheme. Now, as far as it not being done before, well, that's probably because it was just your old, you know, sheds, you know what I mean, like one shed at a time, and this is a container, so it falls under this law. So, if it's cleared up enough to the planning commission, to where this site is, and how it's going to be, and everything is looking good, I think that you guys have an idea how you want to go with this, so I'm just going to be quiet.
Yeah, I think at this point, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for the placement of this 40-foot container at 170 Bowles. And adopt the notice of exemption.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have your container?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. I guarantee it will be an improvement from what we have right now, as far as aesthetics go.
You bet.
I think you're right.
I like your Christmas tree, Mr. Mick.
All right. I think that's the business for the evening. We have an approval for the minutes from last week's, last month's meeting. Do any of the commissioners have any reports for us?
No, not at this time.
No?
We've had our staff reports. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.
You too.